I'm gonna wait just a couple more minutes to let people trickle in. But I guess I can do the boring stuff and tell you all a little bit about myself and my experience as a tutor and my experience with chemistry, if anybody cares. My name is Samuel or Sam, and I've been a tutor on Wise Ant for over a year now. I have extensive experience with chemistry, math, Spanish tutoring, because I majored in chemistry and Spanish at Brown University, which I graduated from in May of 2020. And I've just, I've loved AP Chemistry. I took it as a junior in high school. And weirdly enough, I had a really bad professor or teacher at the time. And that just motivated me and my classmates to work really, really hard, collaborate a lot, do a bunch of review, get as much knowledge into our brains as we could at the time. So I did it. I crammed. I wouldn't recommend cramming, but it can be done, and I'm sure that you can do it too if you really need to. And I hope tonight's review session serves as a good kind of cramming resource before the AP exam, which comes up pretty soon. So it's awesome that you all are coming here to get some more knowledge. If you're not here for AP Chemistry, no hard feelings, totally just leave, no pressure. All right, well, we're at 8:03, so I might as well get started. Thanks for your patience, everyone. And today, we're going to be covering primarily equilibrium, which is actually a very extensive topic. So I'll go ahead and share my presentation I made, and I need to make it full screen, too. Great. So as I go through the presentation, feel free to drop a question in the question and answers. I'll pause periodically to try to answer some of them, but I'll definitely also answer the most that I can at the end. So if a bunch of questions rush in at the end, that's cool, too. But yeah, let's get started. So welcome again. Glad to have you. So this was in the event write description, so no surprises here. But here's a quick overview of what I'm hoping to talk about with you all today. No, not yet. Okay, here we go. First, we're going to define what dynamic equilibrium even is and what's so dynamic about it. Because sometimes we just throw terms around, but it's good to really define what we're talking about. Next, I want to talk about how we can use equilibrium expressions to predict both the direction and favorability of a bunch of different types of chemical reactions. And finally, we'll connect equilibrium to considerations about acid-base reactions, gases and ideal gases, and also things like Gibbs free energy. So it's a huge, wide-ranging topic. Even the sheer number of formulas that show up on your formula sheet includes so much with equilibrium. And that means that it's going to be something that's like really important to cover in a lot of detail. So let's get started. Let's clear up what dynamic equilibrium isn't first, because some people have some misconceptions. A lot of people think that equilibrium comes from the word, well, it does come from the word equal in some sense. It has the root of equal, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we just have equal amounts of your species in solution. So for example, you don't just have one mole of your product and one mole of your reactant perfectly balanced. Your system could have that, but it's not necessarily a precondition to achieving dynamic equilibrium. The other thing is that dynamic equilibrium is not completely static or unchanging. There's going to be some fluctuation and some changes with time. So enough about what dynamic equilibrium isn't. Let's talk a little bit more about what it is. And here's probably the wordiest section of the presentation, so let's just grin and bear it. It's a condition in which reactants and products are present in amounts which have no further tendency to change with time. Okay, let that sink in for a second. And secondly, another way we can talk about it is that there's no observable change in the properties of the system. So if I have a vial of light blue liquid and it's not changing color, the composition is looking similar over time, I could probably assume that it's at a bunch of different types of equilibrium. Oh, and we already have a question? I'm trying to open it. I'm sorry. I can't open it for some reason. Let me actually try stopping the share for one second, because I want to make sure I can do this. Ah, okay, I have a question saying, when they talk about a reaction shifting left or right and reestablished, we're going to get into all these types of things in just a minute. So great question. You're already ahead of the curve, which is awesome. Let me make sure I can share my presentation again. Great. So let's go ahead and continue on. All right, so I love the question that we already got in the chat, because it's predicting what we're about to talk about now. So I love to think about dynamic equilibrium as a fish tank. And I love this little doodle that I found on here, but unfortunately, it's a little too cutesy to use, and it's going to be a little hard to track, so I'm going to do something a little more boring. Okay, it's just a rectangular aquarium. So as I'm sure we're all aware, if there are no outside disturbances, the water in a fish tank will just kind of appear pretty much flat over time. Okay, not rocket science. I hope we can all understand that. But what's kind of interesting about chemistry is we know that even still water that isn't at zero degrees Kelvin does have microscopic movement. There's vibrations, and there's actually some ionization occurring with the molecules as well. So of course, you can zoom in and see those things in a really small scale. So this is one piece of why equilibrium is dynamic. It looks kind of still on the outside, but even on the inside at a microscopic level, it's moving really quickly and buzzing. Okay. Then we're going to have a situation kind of similar to the Q and A question, where we're going to disturb the equilibrium. What happens if we just come through and decide to pour some liquid onto the left side of the tank? Okay, again, it's not rocket science, but I'll give everybody a second to think about what's going to happen. You can drop a prediction in the question and answer if you'd like to. Or not. I think this one's a little too basic. That's okay. So of course, we expect that the water level is going to rise over time. Oh, somebody answered. Sorry, I can't see it. Let me figure out how to. Ah geez. Okay, I'll look at the question and answer in just a minute. Sorry. We're going to expect the water level to rise, of course. Sorry. There we go. But the surface is going to return to looking flat over time. The water is going to slosh and then kind of slosh back until it finally reestablishes equilibrium. And of course, we've all seen this in nature, or if you have a fish tank at home. So this is a great example or a great analogy for dynamic equilibrium. And actually, more specifically, something called Le Chatelier's Principle. Now, just note that you're never going to need to say Le Chatelier's Principle in your answer on the AP exam. They don't expect you to memorize names like this necessarily, but it's always good to have this in your back pocket. Le Chatelier's Principle. The principle says that when a system at equilibrium is disturbed by an outside force, like this slosh of water over here, the system compensates for the outside force to restore equilibrium. So I hope this is starting to answer the question that I got in the Q and A chat. I'll read it one more time, because it's a little wordy. When a system at equilibrium is disturbed by an outside force, the system compensates for the outside force to restore equilibrium. It's kind of interesting how intuitive and how smart nature is. Of course, these water molecules aren't deciding, oh, yeah, let's go rush over to that side to level it out. It's not like, you know, they don't have free will, unfortunately, but it's just the probability and mathematics and chemistry of the situation dictate that you're going to level out over time. Great. So unfortunately, the AP exam is a little more difficult than a fish tank. So let's see if we can do a more concrete example that looks a little more like an AP-style question. I could definitely see this being on a multiple choice, by the way. Okay. We have substance A and B combining reversibly to form C. So of course, not only does A and B come together to form C in a synthesis, but C can decompose back into A and B. That's what the double-headed arrows mean. This is considered to be equilibrium when A has one molarity, B has two molarity, and C has 10 molarity of concentration. But I'm confused, because I thought equilibrium meant equal amounts of everything in my system. Well, no, of course not. That was one of our main misconceptions. Equilibrium doesn't mean equal amounts. It means a system where the tendency to change over time is completely nil, and everything's happy where it is. So I love to personify them by saying happy, but they're content and thermodynamically and chemically stable at those situations. So the question says, what happens if our system has achieved equilibrium, and then we add enough C to double its concentration? Everybody take a second, and maybe you can grab a scratch sheet of paper, or you can drop something in the chat. And while everybody's doing that, I'm going to see if I can figure out how to open these darn question and answers. Okay. Somebody did a great job with the fish tank example by saying it'll level out. Great prediction. And somebody said it'll shift left in order to balance out. It will double the concentrations of A and B. Getting close. I like these ideas. I like the idea of doubling, but we're going to have to talk about that in just a minute. Okay, great. So let me go back to sharing the presentation. Thanks, everybody, for your patience with all that. Oh. I think I might have gotten a chat as well. Oh, yes. Oh, actually, would you mind dropping your little observations in the chat, but then questions in the question and answer section? That would help me out a lot. Cool. I'm learning with you all, so thanks for your patience. So a lot of people have the right idea, it seems. The answer would be that you're going to move left, or you can also say you're going to move to the reactant side, or you can also be a little fancier and say consume C to generate more A and B. All of those answers are completely acceptable. And again, we come back to our fish tank. When a system at equilibrium is disturbed by an outside force, like adding your product C, the system will compensate for the outside force to restore the equilibrium by consuming C to generate more reactants. Okay, a student mentioned something about doubling A and B, and I'm going to put a pin in that for now and just say that's not exactly correct. They're very close, but let's come back to that in just a minute. Oh, no, right now. The question now comes, which is how much is it going to move? All we said is it's going to move left, move to reactants. That's not like that good of an answer, right? Like, I'm feeling like I'm kind of unsatisfied with this answer so far. So here come my caution tape. And it's supposed to say that this assessment with Le Chatelier's Principle has been qualitative, not quantitative. Qualitative meaning it's a description of the characteristics of the system, but it's not a description of the numerical characteristics of the system or the numbers involved. So for example, we don't have the tools yet, just with Le Chatelier's Principle, to say, let's double A and B, because we doubled C. So I love that student's attempt, but unfortunately, we can't just necessarily say that in this case, because this was only qualitative, not quantitative. Fantastic. So it's like, well, but now we probably want something qualitative, I mean quantitative, right? And it turns out that it's going to be the equilibrium constant K to the rescue. So this is a lot of text here, but we'll go through it pretty slowly. So first, sorry, there we go. K is our constant, and it describes the balance of products and reactants for a system at equilibrium at a given temperature. So it is a constant, but a lot of students might miss this. It turns out that it has to be provided at a particular temperature. Most of the time, it'll be at 298 Kelvin or 25 degrees Celsius, which is assumed to be kind of like our standard temperature of room temperature. Next, we have that it's always defined as being our product over our reactants. And most of the time, at least for the AP exam, we define it to be unitless by convention. And a convention just means something we've all accepted to be kind of the way we want to write it, just to make our lives easier. In K, the coefficients from the balanced reaction become exponential powers. And finally, we can use concentrations, or if they're gases, we can use partial pressures. So let's pause there for one second, and let's visit the equilibrium section from the AP exam formula sheet. So this is a sheet that you should definitely try to familiarize yourself with before the exam, because it's good to know where to find the particular equations you like. So KC is your equilibrium constant for concentrations. C in brackets refers to the amount of C or the concentration of C. And you notice that they raised it to a lowercase c, because that was the coefficient in the balanced reaction. D to the d, and then over A to the A, B to the B. So it's products over reactants, unitless. It features all the things we just talked about. And KP is very similar. Writing it out is a little bit annoying, because you got to do these capital P's and lowercase, you know, C, D, A, B, or a subscript, I mean, but it's the same exact principle. So no worries if you don't want to memorize it, because they provide it for you. The last things we need to cover here, though, are that these K coefficients or constants only include aqueous and gaseous species, and they exclude pure liquids and solids. Pure liquid would include something like H2O liquid, and pure solid would be something like NaCl solid, for example. So be really careful not to include those things in your fraction. And the AP exam's a little sneaky, because they don't tell you that. So be very careful about that. And lastly, sometimes we deal with this concept called Q, and Q stands for quotient. By the way, a quotient is just a division problem, like the division we have here or the division we have here. And it describes the balance of products and reactants for a system that could be at equilibrium, or maybe it's not at equilibrium. We're not sure yet. And we always compare that Q value we get to the K value we get, and we see which one is kind of bigger or smaller, or if they're equal, then we're at equilibrium. And I know that's a lot of info, but we'll take it a little bit slower when we do an actual problem. Great. I'm not seeing any new questions. Actually, there's maybe a couple, so let me go ahead and check those. Oh, no, nope, nope. Those were old. Sorry, everyone. Great. So let's do a quick problem. I'll, you know, introduce it, but then I'll shut up a little bit. So here, we're going to interpret equilibrium constants, K. So again, we have our system, A plus B reversibly forms C, or C, you know, forms those. And it's considered equilibrium when we have one molarity of A, two of B, and 10 of C. Oh, sorry, I already showed you the answer. Okay. Does equilibrium favor our products or reactants? And for those of you who didn't see the answer yet, maybe just take a second and see if you have a prediction. You can drop it in the chat, or just think about it in your head, whatever you prefer. Okay, maybe everybody already said, oh, I got a chat. Oh, somebody said something really smart. Yeah, products, products. I've seen products a lot. Great job. So the qualitative observation is that at equilibrium, we've got more products. 10 is definitely greater than 2 and 1. There you go. So products are favored. I love to do a simple, like, reality check like this when I'm doing an AP problem. Oh, yeah. Favors the forward reaction is another great way to say it. Yeah, thank you for that. So I love to do a reality check like this, because I hope that my quick qualitative assessment is going to match my more quantitative assessment, and we're going to do that one now. The quantitative assessment would be what another student wrote in the chat, which is that K is your 10 molarity over your 2 and 1 molarity. Ooh, by the way, A, B, and C must have all been gaseous or aqueous, but I should have written that. That was actually, I'm not being a good role model for you all. But anyway, somebody in the chat wrote that it equals 5, no units. They did great. And that's greater than 1. If the fraction was always defined as products over reactants, and it's greater than 1, then of course, we got more products than reactants of equilibrium, and again, products are favored. These two should always be matching up, and if they're not, try thinking about them one more time. Fantastic job. Okay, let's keep going. Let's do one more little bit of practice, and then things are going to get a little bit more difficult. So if you're bored so far, I'm sorry, but we're getting to something a little more challenging in just a minute. Let's say we have this reaction. D plus E reversibly forms 2F and G. I don't know what these things could be. It's totally made up, right? First, I would love everybody to think about what the expression for K would be in terms of concentration. If K is equal to 0.0001, our products or reactants favored. And finally, what would the value of K be for the reverse reaction? And by the way, when we say reverse, ah, sorry, don't look. Okay, there we go. When we say reverse, we're assuming that left to right is kind of our forward. That's just a convention. I think maybe because in English and other languages, we read from left to right. And that's a way you can remember it as well. The reverse reaction would be F and G reversibly forming the D and E. So I'll give everybody maybe a minute and a half, two minutes to try to think through these. And maybe don't drop your answers in the chat this time, just so you don't spoil it for the other students that are watching. Can y'all hear my computer whirring? It sounds like a weapon or like a car. It's like struggling right now, but that's okay. It'll make it through. You got a question in the Q and A. I see you, but I can't open it yet, so I'll just wait one minute. Should I really not open it? Take around 10 or 15 more seconds. Okay, I'm going to reveal the answers in just a second, but before that, let me see what people are saying in the Q and A. Give me one second. Oh, wow. Everybody's answering. Okay. Great, great. People are doing awesome. Oh, I love that little emoticon. Great job. Wow. People are, thank you so much, everybody, for actually participating. This is awesome. I'm so grateful. Okay, let's go back to the question. And most people are getting it right. So this might have been a little bit basic, but I really wanted to make sure we all had the same understanding, and we were all on the same page, before we get some really complicated examples. So writing an expression for K is a very common multiple-choice question and FRQ question, so it's really important that we nail this. K is this bracket G bracket F squared divided by bracket D. Huh, I'm a little confused, because F and G, I guess, yeah, those are products, so they should be in the numerator. F squared, because the 2. D. Well, what happened to E, though? Doesn't E also count as a reactant? What's going on here? Because it's solid, da-da-da-da. Yes, dilani. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. That's exactly right. It's a solid. We don't care about it. It doesn't participate in equilibrium in the same way, so we exclude it. A lot of students might have accidentally put the E, and you wouldn't get full credit for that, unfortunately. If K has this value, our products or reactants favored. My favorite answer for this would be to say, reactants favored, exclamation point optional. And that's because K is significantly less than 1. We remember that K is always products over reactants, so products are bigger than reactants. No, I'm sorry. If products are smaller than reactants, we get something less than 1, so reactants must have been favored. Finally, what is the value of K for the reverse? You might think that if we reverse the reaction, you'd get to put D over your F squared and G. So you kind of just flip your fraction, or it's called the reciprocal or the inverse. And somebody mentioned that in the chat, so great job. The answer is that K reverse is 1 over your original K, and you'd get 10,000. Also, feel free to use scientific notation, but it was a little bit hard to type on the software, so whatever suits you is totally fine. Okay, let's keep moving. Everybody's doing fantastic so far, so I hope I can teach you all something new. Otherwise, you might have to teach me something, but yeah. Okay. The last thing I want to talk about before we get into a more specific problem is some specific applications of equilibrium constants. So before you look at all this stuff on the left, let's look at the stuff on the right first. Yeah, this again comes from the formula sheet. I just screenshotted it, because I was too lazy to type it all out. We got a KP, which is the pressure one that we've already seen. We have KA. It has something to do with like protons and who knows what. We'll get into it in a minute. KB, KW, and then KA and KB again. And finally, we have this delta G something, and then we finally see a K again. There's a lot going on here, so let's take our time. KP is basically writing an equilibrium constant, but instead of using the concentrations, you're going to use partial pressures. Something that a lot of students have been asking me recently is if you need to find a way to convert between KP and KC, or if KP is just equal to KC in all cases. The answer is the AP, like the College Board has said, that you actually don't need to know how to convert. There's some resources online about the like thermodynamic quantities and stuff that you need to balance out, and it's a formula you use to convert between the two, but you're not expected to know it. But if you're curious, you can always message me, and I can send you a link, or you can look it up online yourself. KA is an equilibrium constant that applies to a weak acid. So got a lot going on here. An acid is basically a species that has the form HA. It can break up into an H plus or a proton, and also the conjugate base, which must have just been whatever this A was, but with a negative 1. The reason we want to specify that it's a weak acid is not due to how much acid is in the system or like what the pH of the system is necessarily, but rather how likely it is that this stuff breaks up into an H plus and an A minus. A strong acid like HCl is basically a forward arrow, or for you all, I think it was that way, sorry, which means that we're not really dealing with an equilibrium forward and backward arrow. But for a weak acid like this HA example, you break up into some H plus and A minus, and sometimes this reforms back into your acid. Finally, we can take that over to the KA, and you'll see that your products are your H plus or proton, your A minus in brackets to represent concentrations, divided by your reactive acid. And typically, KA values range from, I think, like 10 to the negative third, to 10 to the negative, I don't know. I don't know how low they can get, but anyway, that's for a weak acid. Fantastic. KB is similar, but for a weak base. Again, it's weak, meaning it's sort of dissociate, or it sort of picks up a proton and turns into this OH minus. But the really important thing to keep in mind here is that liquid water is not going to participate in your equilibrium. So be sure that you notice that on the formula sheet, there's no water in the denominator. Finally, we have something called KW, and it's actually the equilibrium for the self-ionization of water. So when you're looking at water just sitting on your counter, it's actually not just pure water. It's water that's liquid, but some of it is turning into some protons, and some is turning into hydroxide. And it turns out that the typical concentrations of these things, of the H plus and OH minus, multiply to give us 1.0 times 10 to the negative 14th, a 25 degrees Celsius. So it's pretty low, but it's still significant. And you can also relate that to KA and KB, but we're not doing any acid-base problems tonight, but a lot of them will have this kind of relationship, and the FRQ especially. Finally, I'm going to kind of cover this one briefly now. And it's the relationship to spontaneity, which we kind of associate more with thermodynamics, like your delta G, delta H, and T delta S. And now it's like, wait, we got the RT natural log of K. Where is this even coming from? But remember, we talked about K being greater than 1. Everybody kind of just take a second. You can drop it in the chat if you'd like. What did K being greater than 1 mean about the favorability of reactants versus products? And maybe try to think about why that was the case, if you can. Ooh, got a chat. There are more products than reactants. Yeah. So if the reaction is, oh, I think I got another one. Sorry. More favorable. Yeah. If I have a reaction, sorry, if I have a reaction that gives me more products than reactants, that means my K is greater than 1. But if it gives me more products than reactants, it must love to go in the forward direction. So if K is greater than 1, the natural log of something greater than 1 is positive. Positive, temperature is always positive, because it's Kelvin. R is always positive, because it's a constant. And then finally, multiplied by a negative means that you get a negative number over here. Delta G standard is less than 0, which is another way I'm interpreting this to be a spontaneous reaction. Oh, somebody has a really good answer. More spontaneous, because the forward reaction is favored due to K being greater than 1. I think that's a great way of succinctly tying it all together, which is a great skill to practice. Sorry, I have a few things in the Q and A, so let me see what those look like, and then we can get back to it. Yeah, people are all saying great stuff. Thanks so much, everybody, for participating. It's been awesome so far. Okay. So we're going to kind of take all these ideas, and if we need to revisit the old boards or the old slides, let me know. But I think we're going to have a good foundation now to try a really hard FRQ problem. So this is an FRQ from the 2019 exam. This is totally free to access. I would recommend that you do as many FRQs as you can, within reason, of course. And the other thing I recommend is that you read the whole problem. I know you want to just jump into part D and do everything you know, but there's sometimes little hints or kind of nice routes that you can go down by reading through E and F. I call them Easter eggs, because it's nice little things that you can hunt for, and then give you little hints and surprises that'll help you with part D, for example. So everybody take a minute. Oh, no, I'll read it out loud. I'm sorry. I'm the only one here with a voice, so let me read it out loud. The compound BRCL, sorry, can decompose into BR2 and Cl2 as represented by the balanced chemical equation below. They're very generous and gave you that these were diatomic. That's a huge place students can mess up, but they just said, eh, we don't need to torture you all. Got 2 BRCL gaseous reversibly reacts to form BR2 gaseous and Cl2 gaseous. They also give you a standard enthalpy value, but we're not going to need that for the problems I've selected here. A 0.1 mole sample of pure BRCL gas is placed into a previously evacuated rigid 2-liter container at 298 K. Eventually, the system reaches equilibrium according to the equation above. Okay. Calculate the pressure in the container before equilibrium is established. Write the expression for the equilibrium constant KEQ for the decomposition of BRCL. After the system has reached equilibrium, 42%, kind of interesting, of the original BRCL sample has decomposed. So we need to determine the value of KEQ for the decomposition reaction of BRCL at 298. I also like reading, because then I don't want to like any surprises down the line. I like getting a good feel for what the problem is going to be asking me, and I think we sort of know where we're going. So if everybody's okay with it, I'm just going to move on to the next slide. So we're supposed to calculate the pressure in the container before equilibrium is established. Sounding a little intimidating, excuse me, because we're not at equilibrium. We think we know a lot about equilibrium, but it turns out, we know a great relationship. Oh, wow. Sorry. Between things like pressure, volume, moles, R is a constant, and T. And they give you most of those quantities here, and this is called the ideal gas law. They give you this formula on the equation sheet, by the way. So my hunch is that when we see a bunch of values, like we have the moles, we've got your liters of your container, the temperature, and then of course, R is just a constant that we can provide ourselves, then we're going to be good to use the ideal gas law, especially given that this is a gaseous substance. So I hope it works. Something that I do want to emphasize for just a second is that I would highly recommend that you rearrange your ideal gas law to show the graders what you're solving for before you plug in your numbers. So let me kind of explain what the counterfactual would be. Counterfactual would be plugging in your numbers immediately and then doing the algebra to manipulate them. I find personally that I make a lot more mistakes that way, so I'd highly recommend that you do the algebra with the variables first to isolate the pressure. And you can plug in the moles, your R constant, and make sure you choose the one that matches up with the units you need. And in this case, we want ATM, temperature, liters, and finally, you get 0.122 ATM. Right, I'm going to stop for a second. I got a couple new questions, so let's just make sure I'm not screwing anything up too much. Somebody says, these are really good questions, so I'm going to pause and do them now. Anonymous attendee says, I think I remember my teacher saying that the multiple-choice part does not allow calculators. I was wondering whether the FRQs allow calculators. Ah, okay, I haven't taken it in several years, because I'm 22 now, but I think actually that it depends on the section, on parts of it, they are calculator-active. A quick wrinkle, though. We are in COVID, and I hope everybody's doing okay. But that also means that test-taking scenarios have all sort of switched up recently. They might not let you use a calculator, because then they think you would give some students an advantage. I would just consult the College Board official website to see any guidance on that. The next question says, can you explain how to get R? Thanks. Yes, I did not do a great job of that, so let me reshare and try to do that again. So. Oh, I'm sorry, and I got a chat. Somebody says it's a constant, and that is a good answer, but a lot of students might still be like, wow, where do you get it from? I think they provide the R values on the beginning of your exam, and you want to make sure you use an R value. And I also always recommend that you use the units inside of your R value as well to make sure you're choosing one with an appropriate unit at the end of the day. For pressure, we were allowed to choose the pressure unit we liked, so I chose ATM. And we also know that the R constant has liters times ATM over moles Kelvin. And let's actually do this. This is a good activity. We want to make sure that the end of the day, we just get ATM, because we're supposed to be representing a pressure. So if I have moles here, where else do I have moles? Oh, yeah, in the denominator of my R. So hopefully, those two things will cancel. Oh yeah, in the denominator of my R. So hopefully, those two things will cancel. Got a chat. "I think they give you a formula sheet and certain periodic table for reference." Sorry, this is somebody named, oh, this is Ellis. Hey Ellis, its value in different, its values in different forms are on the formula sheet. Yeah, thanks Ellis, exactly. Oh, yes, Ellis, thanks for showing up. We had a two-hour session earlier today, and he's still showing up, that's awesome. But anyway, back to this, we have moles canceling. We're also going to have liters cancel because we have liters in the numerator here and denominator, because volume goes in the denominator. Then we've got ATM. No, 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 we're preserving ATM, I'm sorry, and then Kelvin are also going to cancel. I love to encourage students to do this because it really helps you make sure your answers are on the right track instead of just throwing numbers around. Yeah, you're welcome, Ellis. Awesome to see you. Well, kind of, great. So I got the value was 1.22, and I did use a calculator for this. Let's keep going. Did I skip something? No, 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 we're good. Okay. The next part says, "Write the expression for the equilibrium constant KEQ for the decomposition." So, we have a couple choices here. KEQ, I typically just think by default is the one with concentrations, but that's not necessarily true. It can also be the partial pressures one. Given that we've already solved for a pressure, and down the line, we're also going to want to use pressures, we might stick with KP, but they actually accepted both answers in the answer key, so they're both good. Just remember, we got their concentrations of products over reactants, or partial pressures of subscripts, products and reactants. And then, of course, you want to plug in your actual species. Luckily for us, they're all gaseous, but be careful here, we got the two coefficient, and that manifests itself as the squared. I'm sorry, I typed it with a carrot, I couldn't really do the superscript, but I hope that's making sense. Great, both answers are totally acceptable. Okay, I'll let that marinate for a second, and I got another question, so let me check that out. Thanks, everybody, for your patience with this. Somebody's asking another question about how to pace yourself in strategy, and I can get to that at the end. Give me one sec, somebody else wrote a message. Again, about the format of the test, I'll answer that in one minute. We're almost done with this one, so thanks for your patience, everyone. Okay, we're on part F, which I think is the hardest part, and they usually build from easier to more difficult. "After the system has reached equilibrium," sorry, "42%, we already read this, of the original BRCL sample has been decomposed or has decomposed. Determine the KEQ for the decomposition." So again, like we said earlier, I like to start with my LaShaw Liais or my qualitative assessment, and then make sure that my quantitative assessment down the line also matches up. So all of the BRCL at the beginning is not going to just stay that way. That would definitely not be equilibrium if we only had BRCL. Equilibrium is always kind of a balance back and forth between the reactants and products, so we'd expect that after we achieve equilibrium, you're going to have some BRCL and some BR2Cl2. Otherwise, it wouldn't really be a system of equilibrium, it'd just be like a completely inert system. I think currently, when we start, we're going to have too many reactants because it's exclusively BRCL2, so we're probably going to shift right to compensate. Fantastic, so that's a good qualitative assessment, but that probably doesn't get you very many points, to be honest. I wouldn't write all this, I would just mostly think all this or write a quick note to myself. For the quantitative assessment, oh gosh, rice tables. A lot of students dread these, but I hope I can make them a little bit more simple. And some students also call them ice tables, so I hope that's not confusing. But we're going to use rice tables with, that is a typo, so sorry, everyone, I meant pressures here, not volumes. "Define KP." Fantastic. So, we're going to have a row over table. R stands for reaction, I stands for initial, C is change, and then finally E, equilibrium. So, sorry, it's supposed to be pressures, y'all. That's kind of an oversight on my part, but I'll fix it later. Okay. First, we're going to have the 2 BRCL turn into BR2 and Cl2. You just copied that from the one they gave you, they were very generous and gave it to you balanced. The initial was 1.22 ATM, and we solved that ourselves. Something really nice about the exam is actually, even if this part were wrong, and you for some reason got 12 ATM or 4 ATM, but you use it and you implement it perfectly, they're still going to have to give you full credit for this section if you do everything correct from there. Because it doesn't seem fair that if you get one part wrong earlier, it's just going to keep being wrong, 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 like that's really not fair. So what they do is they give you a lot of credit for solving correctly with incorrect numbers, which is very generous of them, and that probably saved me back in the day. So, we have 1.22 ATM that we solved for, and then none of the other ones. We expect a change based on the Shaw Liais like we talked about, and what you'd say is, you're going to delete or consume some of your reactant and produce some amount of product. I know X is a little weird, but of course, X is just a variable to represent some amount of pressure that we don't know yet. Can somebody drop an idea in the chat about why this has to be a minus 2X? Does it have to do with the fact that there are 2Xs on this side, or can somebody clarify that for me? Because I wrote this, and I think it's right, but I don't really remember. I'm not an actor, if that's evident. Oh, somebody already chatted. Ellis, again, great work. I'm going to wait for somebody else before I share your answer, but thank you for that. And I do know Ellis a little bit from before, but I kind of feel like I know all of you. We're all bonded through this experience, so. Just give it a few more seconds. Or not. That's okay too. And I'm sure right when I start talking, oh, somebody put it in the Q and A, that's okay, all over the Q and A. "Because you are consuming the reactants to form more products, that explains the negative versus positive." Thank you, Annika, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And then Lauren says, "BRCL has 2 moles for each mole of the products." I believe you meant to say, that's exactly right. It's about the stoichiometric ratios. Great work. So, I have to take away 2 moles of this to produce 1 mole of each of these, hence the 2 to 1 to 1. And of course, equilibrium would be your 1.22 minus 2X, and then your X and your X all in ATM, so those are supposed to be pressures, not volumes. Sorry, everyone, I'll fix that later. Finally, we're supposed to also know that the pressure of BRCL at equilibrium is 42, oh, they told us this, sorry, I'm a given, is that it's 42% less than what you started with, so it's 100% minus your 42% times your pressure is 0.71 ATM. Well, what else is 0.71 ATM? This equilibrium pressure, so this is the slight sneaky algebra they're always going to throw in, because they want to make sure you're a well-rounded student in all of the STEM discipline. Well, not biology so much, thank gosh, but you know what I mean. So, you have to kind of create a relationship between those numbers of equality. So 1.22 minus 2X is 0.71 ATM, which means X must have been 0.26 ATM. I got a chat. How come it's negative 2X? If we split the BRCL into 2 different molecules, it'd become X squared, right? I'm following part of it. You can clarify in the chat if you'd like to clarify if I'm misinterpreting, but I think I get it. It's negative 2X, because if X represents the amount of pressure you produce on the right by breaking this up, you had to break it up twice as much as you're going to get on the right. So for example, if I want to make 1 mole, or 1 ATM even we could say, of your BR2, it actually requires 2 moles of this to break up based on the ratio of 2 to 1 in our stoichiometric balanced reaction. And I think actually, Lauren in the Q and A, if I'm remembering your name right, said it really, really well, better than I could have ever said it, so you can always consult that if that's not making sense. But I hope that makes sense. P, I don't know what your name is, but P is your name on Zoom at least. Cool. "Can somebody just help me feel normal and tell me that this feels like Black Mirror?" Oh, sorry. P says, "If it was BRCL and BRCL to create reactants, wouldn't the expression become X squared rather than minus 2X?" Got it. So this is dealing with the, thank you for clarifying your question, P, whatever your name might be. It's a good question, but it turns out that our KEQ or KP or whatever is defined based on the species in the numerator and denominator, not like the number of moles of them, but just how many there are. So if there's 1 reactant, there's only going to be at most 1 thing in the reactants and denominator of your fraction. No matter what the molar amount is, it's going to be your initial pressure minus 2X, but there's only, oh, squared. Squared later on, yeah, okay, you're, I think you're a step ahead of me, so that's maybe why I was misinterpreting. They're saying something smart about what we're going to do next, so let's see that now. Thanks so much, everybody, for the patience with that. Great. The last step is to finally combine it all into a KP expression. I think this is what user P was getting at. We're going to do the P of BR2 times your P of Cl2 over your P of BRCL squared, so maybe this is where they were going with it. We got it was 0.26 for X, and X was also the amount of your BR2 and Cl2 when it comes to pressure. Yes, P gets it, thank you, P. And that's, oh, sorry, everyone, no. Okay, and that's over your 0.71 quantity squared. Exactly, so another really good tip for you all, just like P was kind of saying in a way. If you see that there's a minus 2X in your change column, and a minus 2X in your equilibrium, you should be very careful to also include a squared in your equilibrium expression, because those 2 things are kind of 2 sides of the same coin. And I think that's what P was getting to, so I'm sorry if I kind of misinterpreted the question at first. But at the end of the day, I plugged this into my calculator because I wish I were smart enough to do without, but I'm not, so I got 0.13. Unit list is fine, a small value is totally fine. The values can kind of range wildly, so I wouldn't put too much stock into the number itself, but just make sure you can read over the process and make sure you feel like it's okay. Fantastic. All right, we're almost done with my part of the presentation. The last part is, I just wanted to show you all another example of an equilibrium-style problem, but we're actually, let's check the time. I don't have a clock, I think we're already at like 30, 35 minutes, or 40 minutes even, I'm sorry if I've gone over, but we have a problem that looks like this, and I can kind of read it out, at least the beginning part. "Several reactions are used, are carried out using AGBR. It's a cream-colored silver salt for which the value of the solubility product constant KSP is this infinitesimally tiny little baby number at 298K." And the first one, write the expression for the solubility constant, or product constant KSP for AGBR. Okay, calculate the value of the concentration in the solution. Then we kind of have some disturbing going on, and I can read it out. "We have a 50-milliliter sample of distilled water is added." That's kind of like our fish tank again, right? We're disturbing our equilibrium. And then you stir it, equilibrium is reestablished, definitely harkening back to LaShaw Liais like we've talked about, "And some solid AGBR remains in the beaker. Is the value of AG plus concentration greater than, less than, or equal to?" Great, I love this question. It's combining all the different threads we've been talking about. We've got LaShaw Liais qualitative, we've got the numbers for quantitative. I hope it's all coming together. And of course, you could try this one out on your own, but I'm not going to for the sake of time. And these are online, like I mentioned, this is from 2010, by the way, I meant to say that. "Calculate the minimum volume of distilled water to completely dissolve." Sounds like sort of equilibrium, sort of not. Student mixes this and this. What will the student observe? And finally, we've got another salt, and it's yellow. So sometimes they throw in these details like cream-colored, and you're like, okay, thanks AP exam, who cares? Like, I'm not here to learn any new chemistry, but it turns out it's actually going to be relevant for the most part. So the student adds some of this stuff, and then they stir it, and they notice a change from cream to yellow. Why is the color change relevant for equilibrium? Does anybody remember why the qualitative observation of a color change has something to do with equilibrium? You can drop it in the chat if you have any ideas. Somebody put it in the Q and A, sorry, I'll look at that in just a minute. Somebody mentioned the pH. Okay, color changes are not always necessarily associated with pH. pH more has to do with the negative log of the concentration of hydrogen. Yes, something with chemical change maybe. Okay, right. So remember, oh, and change in color means changes, which shows not equilibrium. That's sounding good. Remember, we said an equilibrium system has no tendency to change over time? Because if it was changing, changing colors and fluctuating, then it finally rests, and it's at a solid, consistent color, and that's when it's achieved equilibrium. But if we have it going from cream to yellow, it's kind of, I don't know, it's in its teenage years, like we all, I don't know, I, enough of the analogies, I'm kind of insulting y'all, but um, we're just saying it a different way. We have the system reacting and modifying itself and fluctuating, which must mean it's not at equilibrium yet. Sorry if I lost any of my teenage participants, which must be most of you. Let me stop sharing to check the Q and A. And then I'll come back to this board real quick. Oh, somebody asks, "What is KSP?" I'm sorry if I blew through that, so let me define that real quick. KSP is called the solubility product constant KSP. It's kind of like an equilibrium, and it turns out that the AP exam, sorry, I'll pause sharing until I get to the right place, one second, gives you the formula. Oh no, where was it? It was in the applications part, I'm sorry. Let's see. No, I didn't put it there. No, okay, I'm sorry, everyone, let me write it right now. Another application is KSP, so you have kind of a solid that's breaking up reversibly, so I'll add a reversible arrow, into maybe something like A plus and B minus. Well, if it's breaking up into those charged ions, those charged ions should be aqueous, and by definition, our solid salt is a solid to begin with. Does anybody have any guesses for what my equilibrium expression for concentration, my KC, would look like? We can call it KSP, or sometimes we call it KC if we're using concentration. Let me know if you have any thoughts about what would go into it and what might not go into it. Ooh, got a chat, let's see. Somebody says, "KSP is A times B." I like it. Where did the S go though? I thought S was a reactant, so can somebody maybe explain why that's not involved? Kind of making you all do my job for me. They say, "Because it's a solid, yeah, everybody gets it, thank you so much." So solids and liquids are excluded, so it turns out that KSP always has this very similar format, where you're taking your concentrations of ions. Oh, no, no, no. Whoa, 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 I just kind of took that person's answer for granted. I'm sorry, you should always write the charges of your species, I'm so sorry about that. Yeah, so the KSP would be A plus and B minus. Let's go ahead and clear that, and then really quickly bounce back to the problem at hand and see if we can write a KSP for this particular problem for AGBR. So, as I said earlier, I highly recommend that students read through the whole problem because they're Easter eggs. Can anybody identify an Easter egg that might be helpful for writing the KSP? So we know the KSP is going to have something to do with like an A with some charge, I don't know what it is yet, and a B with some charge, who knows? Anybody have any thoughts about any Easter eggs in this particular problem? Seems pretty subtle, so good luck. Got a chat, that's exciting, okay. The temperature, typically when they provide temperature, it's actually kind of something not to worry about instead of something to worry about. Because as a reaction proceeds, if the temperature were to change, you would actually have to change your equilibrium constant throughout, which is a little too much work for us to do on an AP FRQ. So we're just going to assume that if it's 298 at the beginning, it's going to remain 298 throughout, but I really like that idea. Somebody says solubility. Somebody says the very last problem with AGBR and AGI, you're close, everybody's really close. This one's pretty hard to spot, so I'm sorry if it was annoying. But they tell you in part B that there's a concentration of AG plus. So, the only reason I think this is a slight Easter egg is because now we know that the constant, or the charge of a silver ion in your water is AG plus, which must mean that the counterion is BR minus. We also know that BR minus is always BR minus because of its position on the periodic table, but that's a little bit of a hint, right? Cool. So, we actually answered part A inadvertently, but I think that makes a lot of sense. I'll put that up for just a minute, so let everybody kind of let that marinate, and then I'm going to check the Q and A one more time. Okay, going to check the Q and A. "For B, would you use a rice table?" I'll address that in a second, and then, sorry, somebody a minute ago said, "Was it the subscripts? Because BR is in the 7A group, it has a negative 1 charge." That's a great way to do it as well. I'm just kind of a little lazy, and I would say, if you're running out of time, it kind of sucks to flip back and forth between your periodic table and the problem at hand, so why not use your resources that are right there? But of course, it also corroborates what I said, so thank you to anonymous attendee. Somebody in part B says, "Would you use a rice table?" So, let's share the screen one more time, and then for the last few minutes or so, I want to address more general problems about the exam that I can try to answer, or we'll, we'll see how this goes. So we're supposed to calculate the value of AG plus and 50 milliliters of a saturated solution of AGBR at 298. Oh man, when I did that, I'm sorry, my KSP thing went away, but let me just type it one more time. It's just equal to the AG plus and your BR minus, like we've all been saying, and we can use that throughout. "Calculate the value of AG plus and the 50 milliliters of saturated solution." Okay, can anybody, actually, for the sake of time, I'll just tell you, saturated solution means that you put the perfect amount of AGBR so that you're dissolving just enough. It's at the Goldilocks point. You don't have any floating or sinking to the bottom, and you don't have a dearth or a lack of any ions. You kind of have pushed the perfect amount of ions into your water that it could possibly hold. So, that's something to be grateful for, it's actually a nice hint, and it's actually going to mean we're not going to need a rice table. It's going to be a little simpler than that. So the concentration of AG plus is looking awfully familiar. It's one of our Easter eggs that I mentioned, but it's also because it shows up right here in our KSP. So, KSP has a value, 5.0 times 10 to the negative 13 at 298K, which is equal to your AG plus and your BR minus concentrations. So, all I would need to do, well, actually, I have a couple things I need to do, I'm sorry. The one thing we need to realize is that that KSP is actually going to be the same as if I had multiplied the concentrations of the AGs by itself, because any AG that results from the dissociation of your reactant is also going to be the same concentration of the BR minus that dissociates, because we have a 1 to 1 to 1 molar ratio. So you can't generate any new BRs without having come from the AGBR, just like you can't generate any AGs in isolation. So, what that means is we can kind of sum this for a variable, you could say X if you want to, or you don't even need to use the variable. You can go ahead and just isolate the AG plus, so it's not isolated currently because it's being squared. So what I could do instead, and I can't really type this, sorry, so what I'll do is I'll do it to the one half, I know it's a little. I know it's a little cumbersome to look at, sorry, but that means square root, right? And that would be your AG plus concentration. Boom. Nice. All right, a lot of people might be wondering, did I just kind of conveniently ignore this 50 milliliters? I mean, where is it in my answer? I didn't use it inside of the brackets. I haven't used it anywhere. Well, we wanted a concentration and concentration is typically a molarity or capital M, which is moles per liter. Moles per liter is staying consistent and tied to your KSP value. Remember, KSP is a solubility product constant. If you change the volume, that's not really gonna change what the constant is. The only thing that changes it ends up being the temperature, but we don't typically worry about that. So if I change the volume, the same ratios of AG and BR relative to AGBR are breaking off. So it turns out that this is kind of a, it's kind of a trick and we actually get to ignore this. You don't even have to write anything about it if you don't want, but I would say if I had to write something, the KSP is independent of volume. That's one answer. And second of all, you could say something like the AG plus concentration that breaks off is also independent of your volume. It's not really gonna depend on how much you've done, just kind of like the quality of what you end up doing. And I know that's impossible to read. I'm sorry, everyone. Okay. I'll put it up here. I know it's not for that answer, but great. Okay, we're running a little short on time, so let me check the Q and A one more time. Somebody asked me to do the very last problem with AGBR and AGI. Man, okay, I can just touch on it briefly. I'll give you a few hints potentially, but I don't want to solve it and I don't have time to solve it. I'm sorry, everyone. So we have another salt that's yellow. Student adds it. Let me use the highlighter so we can kind of keep track of the important stuff. You got the AG and it's yellow. You stir it and the solid changes from cream to yellow. Write the chemical equation for the reaction. I think this is probably not too bad because we have NAI and AGBR. These are both ionic compounds and we know that because Na is a metal and so is AG. And then I and BR are both non-metals, which mean we have metal, non-metal, ionic bond, transfer electrons, yada, yada. I hope that was last year's chemistry, but if this, if it was this year's, that's no, no worries either. So I would guess that we have a double replacement reaction between the two ionic compounds. So I'd write it that way. Which salt has a greater value of KSP? So if it's going from cream to yellow, that means that our yellow is kind of winning out. And I know that's not like a very scientific answer, but I like to kind of say stuff like this to myself. So if the yellow is winning out, it means the yellow reforms as a solid more readily or more favorably than the cream does. Okay, so I really haven't given you too much. It's a pretty big hint, but it's not everything. So I hope that helps and let's kind of just let that marinate for a minute. And then finally, for the last few minutes, I'll answer the questions from before. Oh, man, time management. Thanks, everyone, for dealing with this. Okay. Need to stop now. I hope that was long enough. And let me answer these Q and As, sorry. Oh, and we also have. Okay, sorry, I'll try my best to answer the most general questions that can help everyone. So. Somebody asked a while ago, will the college board take off points on the FRQ for not showing good enough work? Or do they only care about the answer? Ah, interesting question. I would say the best thing to do is show your work. First of all, I don't trust myself to like keep answers in my head. I need to write everything out. I need to write all of the units out and I would highly encourage all of you to do the same thing. Make sure your units are lining up and make sure your numbers are reasonable. Your quantitative agrees with your qualitative, like we've spoken about, et cetera. But the other thing is, if you have some good work shown on your page and then you just do something silly in your calculator to get the wrong answer, the college board will at least get to see some of your work and that's so much better than if they had no work to look at. So I'd highly recommend that you show as much work as you can, you know, within reason. You don't necessarily have to like show that two plus two is four or anything like that, but yeah, great question from Alex. Let me keep scrolling. I'm sorry, there's a question much earlier, I think. I'm sorry, everyone. Okay, let's find it. Oh geez, well, I thought there was another one. Did I just misremember? I'm sorry, everyone. Well, if you have any particular questions about the exam or anything I'd recommend for studying or strategies or anything, you can drop those now and I'll try to get to them. But yeah, speak now or forever hold your piece. A chat now or forever hold your piece, I guess. Somebody said, for multiple choice, my teacher said to do a minute a question, but what would you recommend as pacing? That is a good question. Yeah, I guess like the minute per question is kind of a good thing to keep yourself on track. But I would not recommend just staring at your watch and doing it that way. And we also know that some questions are very easy and some are more involved. So what I would say is, try to identify the types of questions that are taking you longer than a minute by a significant amount and see if there's anything you can do to simplify it for yourself over time. I think that's a really good question, so my, my best advice is do as much as you can and kind of mimic the test conditions in your house if you can. I know it's not fun because I love to listen to music and, you know, have all my snacks and stuff. But it'd be better if you could try to mimic the test conditions with no distractions and see if you're really spending the appropriate amount of time on each question. Of course, you could take the number of questions for the multiple choice and, no, I'm sorry, the amount of minutes you get for the multiple choice and divide it by the total number of minutes. And then, of course, that would be done, wait, why am I getting this wrong? Total number of minutes divided by the number of questions and that's the number of minutes per question. So I think that typically ends up being around the one or two minute mark for a lot of them. But don't feel discouraged if some of them are taking you longer than others because they can be definitely pretty variable. Okay, let me get to a couple more. Somebody asked, and this was about the particular question, but we need to know what each specific color means. Is there a way to know? For that one, it was only about attributing the color to one of those salts. So the yellow was attributed to the AGBR, no, sorry. Cream was attributed to the AGBR, whereas yellow was attributed to the AGI, if I'm remembering that correctly. So they won't make you memorize colors or anything like that. They'll give you all the information you need. Somebody asks, well, what happened in an FRQ if we forgot the units or you put the wrong units? The number does end up being more important than the units, but I think they kind of do go together. I would highly encourage you to kind of get more familiar with units beforehand. They define all the units for you at the top of the test, but it's good if you don't have to look at that. And to know, for example, that volume is always going to be in liters or milliliters, pressure in ATMs or MMHG, et cetera. Somebody asks me something specific about the 2021 online exam. I gotta be honest, I have not done it yet, so I'm sorry. What I would say is, I could maybe screenshot each of the questions so that you have a record of what they asked, so that you kind of don't lose them. That's the only thing I could maybe, oh, I'm sorry, the question said, what is your tip for the online exam? Because for the multiple choice, you can't go back once you submit an answer, right? So to rectify that, I would screenshot each one so I can have an archive of them and work on them at a different time. All right, everyone. Great. Well, we've already hit nine o'clock. It kind of flew by. I guess I love talking to myself. I hope that was helpful for everyone. It was so great speaking to you all and thank you so much.